Obviously, our department is charged with the oversight in the operation of all school and town buildings, preventive maintenance programs, oversight, custodial, maintenance, and contracting cleaning, capital planning, life cycle analysis, integrated pest management programs, qualified generated sprinkler inspections, environmental health and safety inspections. I'm just trying to pick out all the bullets. I won't go through every one of them. Just getting understanding what we do. This next staff slide represents the current staff and oversight. We roughly have about 22 buildings that we oversee within the town and schools, close to about 920,000 square feet of space. We currently have 34 staff in overall, 10 staff from the Consolidated Facilities Department, which mainly do maintenance, 24 staff for school custodians. We have some contract vendors. We have about 16 right now. We have two cleaning contracts on the town One note I will bring up here, I actually did a presentation to the school, to the borough selectmen not too long ago, and somebody says that when I started this job 3.5 years ago with myself moving over, and obviously, we had a few maintenance people in, so we've increased the staff. So, it's nice to let the public know that today, we have 10, but six of them have already been funded. So, we only really funded four new positions. So, it's nice to know that, because some people say 10 staff, that's a lot of money to the budget, you know, to the pension plan, to health insurance. But, so, we only really, only four really have been added over the last three and a half years. This next, yeah, let me jump on here. Yeah. Yep. Next, keep jumping on. Okay. This next slide represents the cleaning standards for custodians. I think it's always nice to point out where we are within the industry. There's like five levels of cleaning. Most public facilities try to maintain level three, which is that blue slide up there. We try to maintain about 28,000 to 33,000 square feet. The last paragraph down there, all the assumptions, this is based on, the 28,000 square feet is based on the actual productive cleaning. If you know what a custodian does during the daytime, it's, some of it's productive, but they do a lot of other things. They do a lot of security, locked doors, open doors. They do, they have to set up breakdowns, you know, escorting parents back into the building. So, the production really kind of goes up. So, my calculation says that we're probably doing about 36,000 square feet per custodian, which is still pretty good. But, we'd like to maintain between 28 and 33. When you start getting, we're on to level four, then things really start deteriorating. So, we have a lot of square footage, about 680,000 square feet of space that we try to clean. So, that's a lot of space. I believe that the staff is doing an enormous job, you know, trying to maintain what we have to maintain with, based on the staffing levels. This next slide is the work order program that we put in called School Dude. We put this in probably about two and a half years ago. We started out with obviously no work orders. Today, we're teetering roughly about 5,000 work orders. We have completed about 400, about 4,200. We have 125 in progress, and we closed out 754 in PMs. So, it's a great tool. We can kind of go back, look at the analysis, kind of break down where's all the work. Based on the square footage of 920,000 square feet, we're still, we're still running about 60% of our workload is in schools, 30% in the town, and we have 10, just kind of discretionary, all the emergencies that we, but so, you know, but that kind of makes sense based on all the square footage. It's a great tool. It's, out of the 300 schools in Mass., you know, that I know of, probably 90% of the people are using School Dude program. This next slide represents ongoing preventive maintenance measures. You know, so obviously, the department, we do roofing, we do heating ventilation repairs, programming, major plumbing repairs, tile carpet renovation repair, life safety upgrades, major electrical upgrades, major heating ventilation upgrades. That's good. Some of the current goals of the Consolidated Facilities Department. We want to continue to evaluate and consolidate vendor contracts for efficiency, cost savings. When I started this position, you know, we had roughly about 38 vendors. We're down to 16. We'll probably stay somewhere around there, because we really need the 16 that we have. We continue to reduce energy by performing energy audits, obtaining energy grants from utilities, and ongoing monitoring of our energy management systems for peak performance. We continue to train in-house staff in order to maintain these specialized electrical plumbing and heating ventilation system, as well as our roofing, security hardware, and life safety equipment. Some of the energy conservation measures that we've put into place, we're still working with third-party energy consultants to investigate additional energy options for schools and town buildings. We're still a green community. We just did, we just did the updated portfolio for the green community, so hopefully, there won't be too many questions, and we can get certified again. The certification, if we get certified again, we can apply for another round of grants. Every year, the green community has about $250,000 worth of grant money. It's called the competitive rounds. So, you have to compete against someone else. Whoever has the best options for energy savings, you can kind of get there. So, I'm hoping this year, last year, we kind of missed it, because we had to write a new vehicle policy, and it was really, the competition was really steep. This year, it doesn't look as steep, but, so I'm hoping maybe to gain some energy grants. And, most of the grant money that if, if it was awarded, would probably be put towards outside lighting, to, you know, to LED lights. Because that seems like be a big bang for the buck, you mean, outside. We have 250 metal halide lighting, so I'd go to LED, which would reduce that in half. And it's actually, it's a much brighter light. So, that's where we try to put some of these things. The ongoing 5-megawatt off-site meeting project that Glenn and I have been working on for a couple of years now, we're still in the permitting process. It just takes a long time to get the permits. But, it's still, you know, I make the phone call every month, you know, what's going on. It's just a long and slow process. Hopefully, you know, I'm hoping it's gonna, maybe by this April, have some good news. And this year, we negotiated our natural gas and electricity contracts to school and town buildings. Next slide, projects completed in 2015. We did the high school, at the high school, we replaced a roadway in upper drainage up to Lower Gower Road to Blueus Parkway. The high school replaced the Brooksfield outdoor lighting. We did district-wide line striping in all the schools. Pass Mill School replaced the retaining wall that was failing. Pass Mill School, we repaved the rear entrance. And, we also got an energy grant for about $21,000 to $21,000 to replace more high efficiency lighting, and that was all completed. This is some of the things that we, I'm not, it's many more, but this is a snapshot of what we do. These are some pictures. This was the Gower Road site when we were under construction. That's the finished product there. You know, we did, you know, we striped it, and we put drainage on the left side of the road, which actually made a big difference so far. There's some paving and back at Pass Middle School, where all the buses park, it really got beat up pretty bad. This was a retaining wall that was done in the construction project that I'd have to say was not really the greatest job. But, so we, well, I had the contractor there. We had priced the job at about $12,000 at the end of the project. I had the contractor do it during that roadway. We actually did this project for about $2,500. And, this is the, it's not the greatest picture, but that's the finished product. Instead of putting retaining wall back, that would probably fail again, we just graded it out and put grass. Much simpler, much simpler, and less maintenance. These are some, this is a hot water system that we signed with at the high school. This is some of the things that we do that are pretty major. This is the lighting, we just finished a lighting project at the Brooksfield. We have the light having been replaced in probably 12 years. It's a 1500, it's a 1500 watt metal halide. I'd love to go to LED, but LED technology's not there. And, people say, "Well, why don't you go to LED?" I said, "Well, if the Patriots don't have LED, we don't need LED." So, when the Patriots put LED in, that's when the technology's pretty good. So, they haven't done it yet. It's not perfected that well yet. Major projects proposed for 2016. Obviously, these projects, it's obviously depending on approval from capital committee and budget. Continue to install and upgrade security equipment, Pass Middle School, heating ventilation, energy management system upgrades, the high school in Pass and Brooksfield track, high school gym floor transition panels, and the high school fairhouse parking expansion, expansion plan. So, this next plan, actually, that's the, that's the high school site looking down from Google and way, and way in the back of the Copan Fairhouse. Let me make the next slide. That, the way in the back there, you see the new parking that I want to add. I like to add 25 spots, which will really help out with the parking, and maybe look at changing all the parking plans. So, not having, right now, a bus will park, and traffic will come, you know, come in and out. It, the road's not designed for that. We're thinking about maybe making it to a one-way, so you come in, you park your car, and you go out. I think that's going to be enormous, save a lot of time, and maybe avoid any type of accidents or any type of safety issues. So, we looked at this plan. This plan could run anywhere from $45,000 to $60,000, depending how elaborate. There's some, probably some, $60,000 would probably be the highest, where we have to do some granite curbing and some more drainage. But, I think it's, that's how the site probably, who knew how it was designed? 10 years ago, no one really knew how busy Copan Fairhouse would be and the amount of people using it. But, I think we really need the additional parking. So, that's, you know, that's something down the line that we can, you know, try to do fundraising for, or put in the capital, on the capital plan. And then, these last few slides, this future, future needs of Consolidated Facilities. Obviously, we're, the department, we're still looking for a facility in operation building. It's a brand-new department, and I know it's going to take time to really find a permanent home. I'm working with the DPW. They're proposing doing something down there, so we may eventually go down there. But, it may be a five-year plan before that happens. But, you know, it would be nice to have that. And staffing needs for the future, you know, based on funding. Would love to get a licensed craftsman on board to do some of our major carpentry and pull permits for us. And maybe a maintenance system somewhere down the line to help to work with the licensed electrician and the heating ventilation technician. These are just some ideas as we just kind of go with the department. Last, I'd like to maybe a special acknowledgement to, we recently, mostly, we did some, the granite signage, I call it the granite signage team, you know, who, you know, worked around these schools and put all these beautiful entrance stones in. You know, special thanks to Milton Public Parents, David Tarter, who really got this thing going, and Tony Musso, owner of Musso Construction, his crew, Kerry Driscoll, who are very involved in the planning, installation of granite stones. We also like to grateful to Tony Will and Will Custom Soils, who helped, and Mike Sharone, who did all the stone engraving. So, it's really, as a facilities guy, he's, it's amazing, working with David and trying to get this project off. And I think it really makes, you know, the site, you know, really looks nice. And I always like to, we have a bunch of landscapers who work throughout the town, you know, in schools, Cota Landscaping, who are always helping out down at Tucker, Eagle Farms, who, you know, gives us some discount pricing on things that we purchase, Johnny Driscoll, who does a lot of work around town, the Amateur Garden Club, and Malloy Landscaping. And I also like to thank all the department heads and town and school employees, boards and committees, for the support and assistance in this brand of department. I mean, so, wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be where I am today in this department without everybody's support. I hope you enjoyed my improved presentation, and welcome any questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Bill. And before the questions-
Apparently, they liked it a lot, apparently.
Before the questions, I'd like to recognize Bob Mayhew, with his title, Operational Manager, Operations Manager.
Yeah, what, you know, for those who know, Bob's role is a lot of the day-to-day, working with the custodians and the maintenance staff, and juggling and moving people around, and really important, a very important position, whereas close to me on the town. So, he's Bob doing an excellent job.
The day-to-day stuff is non-stop. It's challenging, but we're, I think we're ahead of the curve. We're not, we're not losing. The guy's skill level is getting better and better. I'm proud of all our guys. They're starting to do, you know, flooring, roofing, like Bill said, cross educating them and training with Jimmy, with our HVAC guy, doing three or four calls a day. And all the buildings in the town are Herculean, and keeping up with it is challenging.
Ms. Sheridan?
Hello. Thank you.
Hi, Olivia. Thank you.
One of the updates that you gave were that you negotiated the natural gas and electricity contracts for this year. How did that go this year? I know that's a challenging-
Yeah, well, well, two things happened. Well, the gas, we did pretty good. Gas, we pretty much, you know, we're not, just up a tad. So, we did good there. Electricity has, you know, everyone's heard about that. Electricity just started skyrocketing. So, it went up just based on, you know, and one of the bigger things, one of the biggest costs, we locked into a five-year contract many years ago. It was really, really low. And that contract came to an end. And obviously, now, we had to go up back out to bid. So, the price, the price did go up probably 30% Glen, probably on an average, you mean, depending on how cold it is and how, you know, how people practice good energy conservation. But, that's, you know, it's-
So, I just want to say that that's a huge jump, but, and I see faces around the table, but historically, you've done an amazing job at really getting tremendously low rates. So, from where we were to where we are now is so much greater because of the good rates that you got. I know that, you know, many people would reach out to you, Bill, and try and find out how, you know, what's Bill doing, and who's Bill getting to do the, you know, who's making, Bill making his contract with-
Yeah, well, the team, you know, obviously, we, you know, we go out to bid, and we obviously have a team, and Glenn worked very closely with me, and Sam Simon, Emily Fragan, on the downside. We did a long bid process, because we were watching the market. It's a crystal ball, you know. It's just, who knows what the rate's going to be. It's like, look at gas. I would never think, I went through Whitman tonight, and gasoline is a dollar ninety-seven. I just, who would know that? And I wish electricity go down there. But, it's just, it's a crystal ball. Who would know? But, you know, so we, you know, we did not lock in for a five-year contract because it was high. So, we locked in for a two-year contract, and hopefully, the rates come down, we'll jump into a better contract.
And just one other thing, comment, just about one of the things that you shared with us, that you said you added four staff members. And, I would like to say that, from my lens, I think that that's an investment in our community, because we have these tremendous buildings that we are responsible for maintaining. We can never go back to where we were and let our buildings get into those situations. So, adding four staff members, and now saying that's townwide, I think that, I would encourage you to say that that's an investment in our, in our infrastructure and maintaining what we've got. So, thank you for your good work.
Ms. Zouz?
Bill, just a quick question. You had a screenshot of, looked like a workflow software?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that, is that, is that a new product that you've licensed, or?
Yes, that's one of the things that we purchased when I first, you know, I mean, I knew after I get the department money, we need a better work order program. It's called School Dude. And, you know, we, and it's mainly designed for schools, but we kind of, I craft it so we can kind of piggyback with town council, too. But, every time, you know, and it's still, it's ongoing. We're still trying to get everyone to kind of use the School Dude work order. So, you submit a work order, you pretty much tell me that you might be copying, and we put it down carpentry, and we assign it to a certain person with a certain skill set. So, we can track how long it took you to get the work order done, how much we spent on the work order, and when it was completed.
And has that increased the efficiency of the department in your-
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
It's incredible tool.
Yeah. Because before, it was either an email, or you'd be, you know, the heating guy would be running down the hallway, "Hey, why are you here? Can you fix my heat?" It's, this wasn't really efficient. Because, you know, now, we can kind of plan our workload, and we have to, you know, obviously, on very cold days, you know, we have to, you know, we have to address issues that we have to, the workload system kind of goes to the side. We have, you know, respond to emergencies. It's a nice tool.
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you very much for this presentation, and all the work that you do to keep our buildings, and the town, actually, up and operating. When we last talked about the long range, or the facilities subcommittee, I think we had asked about a long-range maintenance plan for the school buildings. Is that something that's available and could be sent to us, or is that sort of a work in progress? I just, we were wondering sort of where that all is.
Yeah, well, so, you know, a few years back, we did a condition study of all the buildings. And it's really not a long, it's just really, it was a snapshot of where the building conditions are right now. So, we have a capital committee in my job, and obviously, you know, I represent both the schools and the town, and trying to put a capital, you know, all the requests on the next five years. It doesn't address issues 20, 20 years out. That's, you know, you know, that's a, well, that's what I call a deep dive. We have a lot of studies that are being, you know, it's, you know, surface diving, so that condition study. What I'd love to see, but it's very expensive to do that, a deep dive study would be $100,000 plus, when you're really going to every building and look at the structural analysis of a building, the wiring, the mechanical. When is the boiler really going to fail, and the piping? And that, we, I do not have that analysis. You know, I'm doing some analysis right now on the, on the rooftop units myself, because I had an engineer come in, and he kind of showed me how they, how they do it, you know, and I took his plan, and I'm doing it myself. So, you know, so we can say that in 20 years, the rooftop units may start failing, or they might not be efficient. Boilers may, some boilers, but some, a good boiler can last you 20 to 50 years, depending how well you take care of it. It's like anything, I mean. But, in 50 years, is it efficient? Probably not. But, yeah, I'd, yeah, I'd love to have that type of study. I know the, the DPW is trying to do an enormous study right now, and the fire station's trying to do an even study. And, you know, the schools are really, you know, the condition study that we did with DRA, we actually built our schools. Where does, you know, we're, you know, we're fairly in good shape. The buildings are all, you know, right now, Glove is probably, what, 2,002, so 11 years old at this point, 12 years old. So, we're still doing pretty good, you know what I mean? But, somewhere down the line, we're really going to need that type of cap, that, those types of ideas and analysis, the how you budget for the next 20 years, to replace those boilers when they do fail. But, that's going to be very costly. If I kind of, someone answer that, you mean? But, yeah, that's, you know, that's a work in progress. But, it's going to, it's, it's, it's a little bit, you know, I'm a building engineer. When you do a study like that, you hire mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, structural engineers, handicap engineers. It's a, it's a different type of team. But, you know, so that's, and it gets to be very costly.
And then, you had mentioned for FY '16, I think?
Yeah.
The, the parking addition. Is that something that's in your capital request? I don't remember seeing it. Okay.
Yeah, we, you know, it's something we kind of talked about, but we really presented the capital was too, you know, much earlier in the, in the game. And that has to be really, so, so what, so maybe, so not having, if the funding, you know, who knows? Sometimes somebody, you can find funding. But, if you, if we don't go to the capital, I think we still need to look at the parking plan. Regardless if we do the parking, we may want to, we'd redesign it, soon to make it safe. Because I think it just may, it may buy some time in some wear and tear, because what's happening, a lot of people are parking on the grass, which is ruining that. So, maybe having that one way may, may solve, solve that issue. So, it's still, it's still very worth, you know, it's a good thing to look at.
And then, just while, still talking about parking lots, the lights. So, as I drive around after these meetings, there are many lights that are out in the parking lot. Is that, do we have a system for identifying when lights are out?
Yeah.
And, you know, how is that communicated, and how quickly can it be turned around until the lights actually get installed?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, we, I would say lighting is-
It's constant.
It's a constant challenge. We, you know, so most of the lighting gets done in the evening, because we need a bucket truck to do them, and it's, it's 277, so it's pretty, it's, you know-
Specific.
Yeah, if you make a mistake, it's, it's not good. I usually use the DPW after I would be of a bucket truck. Kevin Locken, who's been very good to us, and we probably, within two or three days, we could pretty much respond. Like tonight, knowing I was coming here, half the lights were out on one, I mean, now. So, I obviously knew, being a facilities guy here, there's a problem here. It's not, all these lights didn't blow out. Somebody was working on the panel today, and forgot to turn them back on. So, I went there, and I turned them back on. So, hopefully, if you came early enough, maybe I'll go back out there, I'll be back on again.
So, those I noticed, as I came in, not being a facility person, I had no idea. It was just a switch that was off. But, there definitely is one light out here that's been out for several weeks now. So, I guess that's what I'm asking, is there a system, whether it's, you know, the closing custodian walks, you know, walks around, I don't know, or drives around and says, "Up," you know, and sends an email, or whatever, that says, "At some point, we need to get these fixed."
Right, yeah.
Those are the kinds of things I worry about, just, you know-
We have custodians that will be poured back to me, or sometime, you know, Bob's working late, I'm working late, we kind of do a survey. And then, when I call Kevin, I say, "Kevin, I have three lights out at the high school, three at Glove." And you try to be efficient.
Right.
Because I don't want to call high on Kevin every other night.
Every day, right.
You know, for one light, two lights, three lights. And a lot of times, it's not the light bulb. It's a, it's a transformer. It's a relay. So, it's, it may not be the bulb. So, sometimes you have to order like, you know, a balus or a relay. So, yeah, but we, we're constantly doing. We, we probably, it's, these, that's one of the reasons why the LED lighting, for me, is going to be enormous, because it's a brand-new fixture, and those bulbs supposed to last for five years. So, we're doing, yeah, it's, you know, these lights are kind of getting old, the, you know, it's, you know, the fixtures are getting old. So, LED lights will make a big difference.
And on that note, I just want to commend you for your continual looking for grants, especially around more energy-efficient, whatever, light bulbs or whatever, across the schools when you are here, and then probably across the town. We definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of grants out there, but yeah, but they're very competitive. It takes a lot of time to get them. But, you know, we've, you know, we've done extremely well. I'd say this, you know, we've, the school's done, you know, really well over the last seven, eight years in trying to get these grants. And I actually like that. That's my, that's my passion. I love doing grant, you know, for all the energy. But, it's tough, tough to get them.
And just on that note, I remember years back, there was sort of a walk through the entire school system to see whether refrigerators were, you know, in classrooms, et cetera, which I think you were suggesting that if we took them out, would be a benefit to energy. So, if we really do, and I guess I would like to ask Glenn at some point to report out when this increase in electricity cost is coming, you know, maybe that it's time to redo that, just to make sure that we're, every classroom is really as efficient as it possibly can be, especially if we're going to be hit with a huge increase in electricity costs.
Yeah, we always say that a lot, you know, either the biggest, I remember sitting here, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, and we talk about, it was an energy group that was coming in. It was all based on behavior, that the biggest savings is behavior. When you leave a classroom, turn the light off. Don't wait for the sensor to turn it off 20 minutes later. If everyone did that every day, you could really, even your, even your home home. Turn on the thermostat a couple of degrees. It makes enormous difference. So, it's a good, you know, good to practice, good practice in your own life. I mean, so, yeah. So, I always, I always tell people that. And, yeah, when we did that energy audit, we, what we did is that we purchased some refrigerators, but they're more efficient. We took all the old ones out, and we really kind of narrowed down. But, it's still, you got to constantly go through, because new teachers come in, and, you know, everybody likes to bring their coffee pot and microwave. It's just the way it is, so, yeah.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
May I say something before Bill leaves? This, we've come to a new level that whenever Bill would come, we'd talk about Consolidated Facilities. And so, now, it's a nice night that Consolidated Facilities is just part of the town of Milton. And so, for those skeptics of Consolidated Facilities, there's not one downside for the Milton Public Schools for Consolidated Facilities. We have one on every single front. And, working with Bill, of course, we're all hesitant. Oh, Bob's nice, but we know Bill, and Bill's in charge. And I want to say that Bob Mayhew gives us 150%, just like Bill Ritchie does. And, I think you could stop any teacher, any principal, any coordinator, any custodian, and it's only been pluses for the skeptics and for the naysayers out of Consolidated Facilities. I cannot imagine being alone, not being part of the town when it comes to these facilities, and not having the benefit of the entire town. So, for everyone who's supported Consolidated Facilities, and to Bob and Bill who champion the town, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to thank all the principals that helped. They've been so complimentary and appreciative with our new painter. He's getting a lot done after hours, and it's really starting to pay dividends and show. So-
Well, everybody worried that the two of you, we wouldn't see you, or you wouldn't be as accessible. And, it's just like the two of you, Milton Public School employees and town employees.
Well, Bob was nicer than me. Because he bothered me to do it, but I have to pay the bills. So, I'm a little tougher. I say, "Hey, wait, it's not budgeted."
Bill, I have something to tell you, a little secret on TV. He's just as tough as you are. You trained him well, educated him well.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
We, going on to the next item. Last week, you had the high school team here. I would ask, if the chair would ask for a vote to approve the Milton High School Program of
So, we had a briefing on this last, last meeting. There were a few questions. Principal Jett sent a memo that addressed those questions. So, Ms. Kelly?
I just have one question. It may just be my lack of attention to detail and high-
It may just be my lack of attention to detail and I apologize in advance. I thought we were talking about advancing STEM classes and maybe it's the STEM approach to all science classes. But I guess I was surprised to not see any, any mention of that in the program of studies. So, I guess, again, I might have been misinformed and been hallucinating or something, but, um, I thought that was part of sort of our multi-tiered, we were advancing STEM at all levels and yet I, I don't really see STEM even as a word being mentioned, never mind a separate class. And maybe there is no such thing as a separate high school science STEM class, but
I don't know if we want to vote this tonight pending me following that.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
No, but we've put a tremendous amount of work and they're doing a tremendous amount of work at the high school. So, your point is correct. So, I'll follow up with the science director and the principal tomorrow. So, if you approve that pending, I would send out, um, and go over those, uh, science options.
I'll have a motion for approval.
Some of.
Second.
Moved by Michelle and seconded by Mr. Zeus. Uh, all in favor of the motion? It's unanimous.
And I appreciate Ms. Kelly for years, um, that's an educational piece asking and reminding us that that's supposed to be approved. Um, in your packet, Karen Klasby, I want to wish her well and thank her for her service to Milton Public Schools as announced her retirement as, uh, Director of Pupil Personnel. In your packets, I have inserted a timeline, um, for a search committee. Um, we'll be, I'll be contacting the PTO presidents and asking for representatives. I'm asking for a representative from this board if you'll take a look at the schedule. Um, we go between nights and days. This search is going to be a search that happens during the day and I know you're all employed and, um, have busy lives, but if you would consider, we've actually identified days that the interviewing and the screening will take place. For the viewing public, you should know that I go to the Milton Educators Association and, uh, they come forward with two or three teachers and one administrator. Central office identifies principals. We have, uh, parent representatives for this high, um, parent representatives, I should say, um, at, I'm talking about the high school. There'll be representatives system wide from regular education and special education on this committee, a school committee member. Um, unlike other school districts where the superintendent screens the applications and will give 10 applications to the screening committee. Um, if we have 50 or 150 applications, they're all given to the screening committee. We establish the characteristics we're looking for in the new Director of Pupil Personnel. We screen individually, we come together, we have a process of identifying, um, candidates that we want to interview. We create the questions together. Um, the prior superintendent, Dr. Shafun, created an outstanding and very streamlined process for the interviewing. And, uh, again, as I say to screening committees, at the end of this process, that's been perfected over the years, uh, everyone on the screening committee owns the appointment and supports the appointment and knows that they've been involved. So, that's in your packet.
Let me just make a, uh, comment to that. So, at this time, when you're looking at this job and, um, going out for a search, I'd just like to make a comment about the title. I think that the title of Pupil Personnel Services doesn't necessarily inform the, the public what this job is. And I'd just like to suggest perhaps we look at what other districts call this, this job description, what the title is that's given and, and maybe revisit that at that time. Just a suggestion.
And so, for the viewing public, Ms. Sheridan's talking to, um, this is the Director of our Special Education Programs. Um, that person also oversees, um, the homeless, uh, the children whose families who have identified as homeless. They are different, uh, we did this about four years ago and we did the title, but the point's well taken and we'll take a look at it. Uh, so that's in your packet. Uh, very briefly, tomorrow night, I want to review, I want to remind the viewing public that tomorrow morning, Milton High School students, Chris Heron, will speak to Milton High School students, uh, for the second time. He's coming here to Milton. And tomorrow night, I want to urge parents to consider coming to the Milton High School auditorium at 6:30 for the Chris Heron presentation. Um, Rabbi Benjamin, uh, spoke to you, but for anyone who just viewed, turned on the school committee, reminding you Monday night, January 19th, Milton's Community Annual Memorial Celebration in the name of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King at the Concord Baptist Church on Blue Hill Avenue. The entire public is invited. Uh, we're not going to have another meeting before next Tuesday, uh, Tuesday night. Is Tuesday the 20th?
Yes.
Yes.
Tuesday night. Tuesday night, I call graduation and next Tuesday night, the two biggest nights in the Milton Public Schools. What's next Tuesday night? This is a quiz.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten information night. Um, kindergarten information night, uh, you will see, uh, full Chelsea Winchester auditorium. Parents who also have children in the Milton Public Schools come back. It, uh, you'll, you'll never see so many smiling faces walking into that night. Um, the kindergarten team, the principals led by Janet Sheehan are doing a tremendous amount of work. We present everything from our community, uh, schools program to transportation speaks. Um, and it's a very exciting night. And I always say that next Tuesday night is the beginning of a 13-year relationship with the parents and guardians of the children entering the Milton Public Schools next year. Um, I want to make the night of the Milton School Committee by telling you that we're close to the number of register, uh, families registering that we have currently in kindergarten. Um, so you can translate that into, again, uh, we're going over our data for the last two years. Um, some parents come and decide their child's not going to enter kindergarten at this time. Um, life happens and people move, but indications are that enrollment's going to be very, very high. Um, I want you to circle your calendars, next Thursday and Friday night at 7 o'clock and next Saturday at 2 o'clock, um, Milton, uh, PS players are presenting Oklahoma. Uh, that's a treat and tonight, uh, it, it does sell out on some nights. Um, on the front of our website tomorrow, you'll be able to find after I speak with Chairman Walker, the updated, uh, dates of the school committee and the administration going out, um, explaining the FY 16 budget and the cuts and reductions to the PTOs at all of our six schools. Uh, also, I want to, um, take one moment and remind you to circle your calendars. Uh, February 11th, Milton High School staff and teachers are coming up with an unbelievable evening that they are planning, um, 50 years later, why the struggle for civil rights is still relevant. And they've gotten speakers from across Massachusetts. They are working with the staff and the students. And again, this will be a night that will be remembered, uh, for a long time in the Milton Public Schools, a night that everyone's looking forward to. But, um, I want to close with a, a very interesting story. Uh, the Blue Hills Bank that's just now opened, um, one of its, uh, I guess you call it?
Branches.
Branches. Here in Milton, last year was very good to the Milton Public Schools. We applied for grants and all of our schools except Pierce was awarded a grant and we'll detail those grants in my email blast. This current cycle, uh, celebrated today, um, that Pierce was awarded a grant. So, now the Blue Hills Bank has awarded each of our schools a very generous in the number of thousands of dollars grants. It's a competitive process. Well, the Pierce came back today and the Blue Hills Bank, if you go to it, they have a calendar down there. I sent somebody today, but they had closed to get all of you one. And this calendar, sponsored by the Blue Hills Bank, uh, celebrates hometown heroes from all the communities that the bank services. Well, uh, the Pierce came up to me and said, Mary, you know, um, Miss November? And I said, I do? And they said, yes, Mary. You know?
Oh!
You know, that Miss November? So, for the viewing public, Miss November is our own school committee member, Lynda Lee Sheridan, who is probably going to see you tonight. Not share that she was at the event today at the hotel, at the breakfast and luncheon. I'm waiting for the $1,000 check she was given for her favorite charity to donate, but since she's a Boston school teacher, she, and she got the grant for the Boston schools, she might have another charity other than us to donate to. But I said, maybe she wants to make an announcement tonight. And, um, this is right up in Hutchinson Field when she chaired the 350th anniversary. So, I want to congratulate you, Ms. Sheridan. You're probably too shy to have shared, but people can go to the Blue Hills Bank and get their own calendar. And we were very proud. And the Pierce, people were very proud of you and we are very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
So, that's the night.
It was a great honor.
Thank you.
Wow, how do you follow that?
With Mike.
I, I don't know how Superintendent Gormly missed it, but there's an event that we're going to be helping out on, on February 8th, the morning, Sunday morning, that maybe you want to just mention as well.
Would you do that for me?
Yeah.
That's a miss on my part.
Yeah, well, which is fine because we're so involved in it. That's why we just assume everybody knows about it. But Milton, once again, is sponsoring a robotics tournament on February 8th, Sunday morning, and it's in the Fieldhouse this year, is that right?
It is in the Copeland Fieldhouse.
And it is quite a sight to be seen. So, if you have never been to one, you will be fascinated.
So, Ms. Padera does the registrations and 20 high schools from, um, the greater Boston area are competing. We're going to, we can't compete, we're hosting. Our team is going, Ms. Kelly could do this presentation too. Our team's presenting next week. Um, John Diamond told me where they're going. They're busy every morning working on their robot. You can report to your boys. But this is an unbelievable opportunity and the whole community's coming together to host, uh, 20 high school teams coming. And so, if you circle that date in your calendar, that Sunday, um, between 12 and 4 is the best time for the viewing audience. In the morning, uh, they're working on their robots, but the competition is between 12 and 4 and then the ceremony's at 4 o'clock. And John Diamond and a huge team, uh, K-12 and the Milton Public Schools, uh, in fact, Ms. Downs is going to issue the 27 jobs that John Diamond needs help with, uh, to be able to host, uh, the hundreds of high school students in this competition. Thank you, Ms. Padera, for remembering that.
And just to add to that, they, um, because I think that, I'm not sure if I sent you that email, but it, um, the Milton Robotics Team who entered the Zero Robotics Tournament this year made it to the third round in that national competitions, which is pretty impressive in their first year. And I think they just had, you know, a student, a team of like five or six students, so they did very, very well.
Thanks to you for getting us involved in that. Thank you.
So, I'm going to move to, um, I'm going to reorder this again, but I'm going to move to the report out on the budget planning meetings we've been having. Then we'll do town school consolidation since, uh, Ms. Dexter and Ms. Fagan are here. Then we'll do five-year projections, then we'll do budget cut reduction list. So, here's, um, here's a document that I'd like to hand out. Um, last Thursday, I'd like to commend Katie Conlon, who's our Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, she asked that, uh, some representatives from the schools, the warrant committee and the town get together, uh, to talk about the fiscal 16 budget. Her idea was that, um, because, as you know, we have currently a $1 million reduction target uh, based on the warrant committee's, uh, current look at a balanced budget, uh, and the town has similar impacts, she thought that it would make some sense for us to have some conversations, not just about the fiscal 16 budget, but about the, uh, financial future of the town over the next four to five years. So, we talked about, uh, free cash, we talked about, uh, potential overrides, we talked about the impact of reductions on towns and schools. And, uh, this is, uh, what we asked Ted and, uh, and Amy, who's here to put together. These are different scenarios which, uh, look at using more of the free cash and, and what the impact of that might be. But as we talked about it, obviously, using all of the free cash is not normally, uh, a fiscal action that you would take. But in this case, we said that if that was coupled with, uh, what we're calling a two-year plan where we use some of the free cash, more of the free cash, uh, to obviate the significant impacts of reductions in fiscal 16, but agree that we will, uh, support overrides in fiscal 16 and 17, one for firefighter pickings of about $300, $300,000 in fiscal 16 and then a larger general operational override in 17, that, uh, that was a plan that we think certainly moves the town forward. It positions it, uh, for the next three to four years and eliminates the needs for, the need for the schools to take a $1 million cut. So, after some discussion, we met last Thursday and then we met again this morning. And as a result of those two meetings, the warrant committee met last night and, uh, the consensus that we reached this morning was that we would each go back and ask our respective, uh, bodies to support, uh, scenario E. Scenario E allows for, uh, the schools to receive rather than a $1 million cut target, a $500,000 cut target. And it also, uh, further down allows for about $300,000 in capital cost. That's important because, uh, we, in the capital committee meeting on Monday night, we talked about, uh, the various capital requests and the schools, as you know, has some technology requests that you all approved several months ago. But the discussion was which, which of the capital requests are candidates for bonding and which of the capital requests should be funded, uh, using free cash or some other means. And the thought was that, uh, most of the technology requests, because of the short useful lives, uh, should be funded with free cash. This allows for some free cash, um, to be available for, uh, that purpose. That failing, um, some of those capital projects may be in jeopardy. So, what, what we're asking is that, um, the school committee and Katie will be asking the Selectmen to do the same, uh, next Wednesday evening. Uh, but we're asking that the school committee, uh, support what we're calling a two-year plan that implements, um, scenario E, so reduces our cut target from $1 million to, $1 million to $500,000, allows for the use of some free cash for capital costs, uh, that we would support an override for firefighter pickings of approximately $300,000 in fiscal 16 and a larger general operational override in fiscal 17. Questions?
So, the override for, for next year would just be for that smaller amount?
Yes.
And then in the following year, we'd be seeking another override?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we're not doing both things at once? It's just to spread it out?
We talked about that a lot and, uh, the, the other benefit, we think, of this kind of two-year plan is that this allows us to use the, um, if you're thinking, uh, this year, the Maytown meeting and the October meet, town meeting to do education. Firefighter pickings, we think, has enough visibility, um, so that we don't need to educate people much about that. But for the general operational override, I think that, uh, we thought that it, we should give that, uh, more time to build support.
And then, do we have enough, what's, how do we know what the next year's budget is going to look like where we wouldn't need an override? Are they projecting we would not need an override next year to meet, to not have drastic cuts to the school next year?
No, this, this, did you want to comment?
Well, I just wanted to comment when you mentioned firefighter pickings, that these need to be two separate overrides. That one is a different kind of an override. It sets a limit for the amount of expenditures that could be put, um, owing to his conditions. So, it, there can't be one question in any case, so that there has to be done as two, two separate items. So, I would just want to mention that in case anyone was thinking they could be lumped together somehow. They do have to be two separate items because they're different kinds of things.
Okay.
So, to your second question, this solves, the, the use of more free cash solves, well, essentially solves the fiscal 16 budget problem.
Right.
And the override would take care of the fiscal 17 budget shortfalls. And hopefully, two to three years out past that.
Okay, so you were talking about the pickings override would be for, that would be on the ballot this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the following year? Gotcha.
Ms. Kelly?
So, how much, uh, I might be missing, but the capital that you
So how much, I might be missing, but the capital that you mentioned, is that on here?
It is. It shows as financial software, town software for 215, 799, and consolidated facilities miscellaneous for 60,000. So, but doesn't necessarily have to be used for that purpose, but that's what he was allocating for capital.
So the capital is about 275K?
Right.
And you're saying that the schools need some of that?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm, I'm saying that if, that's correct. If the decision is not to bond those things, and I have, actually have these here. So I'm, our number, right at the top, our number one priority was virtualize the servers. The discussion was that they, the servers have a longer useful life, so we could bond those, so we're good on those. But our number two priorities were the iPad cards for SPED, the iPad cards for the high school, and the iPads for teachers. So we would need money to make sure that those, that our number two priorities are met there.
But there's no additional funding. I understand that, you know, the, the software is put in there and then whatever the other thing is there, but we're not even listed on here, I guess.
No, we're not. But I, I, so when Mike makes his proposal, I have a proposal on how we should structure that vote as well to make sure that there's some money available.
Okay.
It, it should also be noted in here that the, he has included $300,000 for the pickings medical funds as part of this. So in fact, if that is an override and that does pass, that money would come out of this bucket and free up potentially that much more for spun, for other expenditure. But right now, in this scenario, it's funded out of free cash.
Yeah, yep.
Ms. Sheridan?
Just a little thing that jumps out at me, that maybe by the year 2020, we might not be using Chromebooks. So I mean, I think it's just a technology.
We're talking about 2016 on here.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, as I look at this document, I'm just thinking about whether it's just technology or not.
So if I could, I would like a motion supporting Scenario E and the plan that that includes for overrides in 16 and 17, and urging the selectmen to do the same. Ms. Kelly?
I certainly would approve of the plan. I don't know that I can vote to, because I won't be a school committee member as of, as of April. So I can't, I can't bind the school committee in that kind of a vote going forward, but the premise, I think, makes a lot of sense.
I think you can vote to support the plan now.
Yeah, well, yes, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't think it binds the newly elected school committee.
They could take it up again, I guess.
Right. It's moved?
Thank you very much. Moved by Ms. Padera, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. On the motion, all in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Now the moment you've been waiting for. Mr. Zulis has a presentation.
Oh, thank goodness. You haven't talked in so long.
I know. I've been trying to be quiet this evening.
You've spoken.
This is on the, another, another recommendation from the Town School Consolidation Committee. We have a couple of the members here. I don't know if you want me to go over there with them?
Up to you.
I think so. If they want to, if Anne Marie and Amy want to come up and.
I'm kidding. They're like imaginary friends up there.
Yes, Becky, I have imaginary friends. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thanks.
So just to remind you from last week, we are the Town School Consolidation Committee, which was charged by the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to look for efficiencies in business operations and information technology. Our members are, as I mentioned last week, and they include Anne Marie Fagan, our town administrator who's here, and Amy Dexter, our town accountant who's here, and Glenn Pavlicek, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, who, who is here. Also includes the other members listed up there, Phil Matthews, Jim McAuliffe, and Michael Blanchard. And I think you're familiar with our charge, as we mentioned last week. And so at this point, what we wanted to do was just set the context, and we tried to do this last night in the presentation, we'll try to do it again in this presentation, to set the context for what we're doing here. And the sights and sounds that you see may.
Boy.
Give you a sense for what we're dealing with here. Everyone, everyone who, who's here probably has some memory of the 1980s. You may remember some of the things up there. You may remember some of the, some of the music. You can keep the music loud, but I'll help juice me up a little bit. No, that's okay, that's okay.
Is that your band, Mike?
We can.
Is that your band?
We can go to the next slide. Many things have changed since the 80s. You can click on the music because we have some more music. Many things have changed since the 80s, including the fashion and the style and the culture and the politics and, and the music. And hopefully, you can appreciate some of the cultural memories that we've put up here and the music that we have playing in the background. One thing that hasn't changed, and Glenn, you can go to the next slide, one thing that hasn't changed is from the 1980s, and that is our financial accounting software. So while many things may have aged with grace and some of the music you still may appreciate from the 1980s, I can assure you from our review of things over the last 10 or 11 months, the Milton financial accounting software that was implemented first in the 1980s, as best we can tell, has not aged well. And effectively, I think it's fair to say, is broken. And we have, in our review, identified, Glenn, you can go to the next slide, identified this as really the primary, great, as the primary inhibition to greatest, greater efficiency in the business operations and in the, of the town and the schools. I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I know you're trying to, very important word. But can we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Because I think there was music there that we did not get.
I'm happy to have that pointed out. I was going to blow by it.
He's been asking for the music. That was good of you.
Glenn, he wants the music. And I can.
Oh, boy.
I can actually, I can actually, let me, let me just give you a quick anecdote on the music.
We can't.
What we chose for the music, what I chose for the music, was, first you may have noticed Van Halen. I, I kind of thought Tom Hurley from Van Halen, man. And obviously, the second music was Madonna. I, you know, Katie Conlon strikes me as Madonna fan. And then obviously, we've got U2. That was intended to entice Dennis Cohane to, to support us. So that's, that's where the, that's where the music comes from. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. We can go to the next slide.
You'll have to travel with the Mary to every presentation.
So was that impolitic to say on TV? Probably. So anyway, back to the, back to the substance, you know, this isn't just flash. This is, we actually have substance here. And, and in the course of our meetings over the last 10, 11 months, and we've met approximately 28, 29 times, we've, we've talked to 10 different town employees, well, not including the town employees you have here who are working with this software. We created for you and for the Board of Selectmen and for the capital committee and for anyone who wants to read it, a 10-page memorandum laying out what we see as the deficiencies and what we see as the alternatives for improvement. So we've, we've done a lot to review this. And we see this, this, what we refer to as decades-old cobbled-together financial accounting software as one of the primary, primary problems in, in terms of efficiency in the town operations and school oper, school business operations and information technology operations. Just to highlight a few of the, a few of the deficiencies, whoops, did that right? Just to highlight a few of the deficiencies that, and give you an overview of what is in the memorandum. The primary problem here is that the status quo is not an option. Our support for our current software package, given its age, this is not surprising, is being phased out in the next three to five years. And if you assume that implementation will take, which we do, which, implementation of a new system will take 12 to 18 months, if we wait and we don't seek approval for this until the town meeting in 2016, that will put us right up against the earlier deadline, the three-year deadline. This is because it's best to migrate financial reporting and receivables on July 1, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, and best to migrate payroll and accounts payable on January 1, the beginning of the, of the calendar year. So if we wait until May of 2016 and we are starting with payroll and AP on January 1, 2017, then we're right up against a 12-month implementation. So we think, given the fact, and we, we found this out, when we were in the course of looking into this issue, we found this out in November, this heightened the urgency significantly. Another deficiency that we, that we've, we've identified with respect to the software is because it's old, it just doesn't provide the functionality needed for a $100 million enterprise. And the result of it is, because we've, because of what's happened over the years and different packages have been cobbled together, there is not full integration, both within departments and among departments, including the town and the school department. It requires manual entries for, repeated manual entries of information, which leads to high risk of error and miscommunication. A couple of examples of that, the town accountant, Amy, when she receives commitments and abatements from the assessor's office, it requires her to enter those manually. And she has to do that on more than 100, more than 100 manual entries a year, which would be obviated if you had an integrated system. As you, as most of the members of this committee know, revolving accounts under the current soft, old software package are zeroed out, zeroed out at the end of every year. These are revolving accounts for the school and for the town, which requires a reentry of the balances in those accounts at the beginning of every fiscal year. So basically, we, the, the, the town and school personnel take the number, the old numbers, print them out and figure out what those numbers are and re-enter them for the beginning of the fiscal year. So these are just some of the ways in which this, 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 this software is deficient. As you, as people in this room also know, the schools are unable to combine school grants and other funding with the general funding. And so what this results in, both in the schools and there are other instances in the town, is that there's a heavy reliance on Excel spreadsheets and in some departments, QuickBooks accounting software. So there's a lot of reliance on outside the system programs and spreadsheets in order to get a, an appreciation for the financial status, excuse me, of the schools and the town. The third of the five major deficiencies is the, the lack of efficient and timely report creating functions. In order to get reports from this, the current system, which is a DOS-based system, which I don't even know what that is, it's not a Windows-based system. It requires the entering of arcane multi-entry formulas in order to get any kind of useful reports. Or it requires the, the town personnel trying to get reports to consult with the, the vendor and have them consult and try to, try to develop the reports for them. So this is costly, this is inefficient, it doesn't work well. It results in quarterly reconciliations that take days instead of hours. The fourth primary issue that we, that we saw, and this is, this is telling again for the people in this room, and that is that this software is unable, as far as we understand, to handle complex payroll such as the schools, and this really applies to the schools. Because of the, the inability of the software to handle complex payroll with many different, many different payment structures and employees getting different kinds of payment, the schools can't run one payroll. We have to run 14 different payrolls, which again, creates high risk of error, creates inefficiency, creates a lot of busy work for personnel who could be doing other more important work. There is no connection to the mass teachers' retirement system. And so those reports have to be created outside the system, which creates more risk of error and creates more additional unnecessary busy work. There's no, what some refer to as encumbrance or projection of payroll. So you can't sit here today, and Glenn could, could explain this better than I can, but you can't sit here today and project where payroll will be in two months in the system. You have to do it outside the system, create an Excel spreadsheet to do it. There's no tracking of time, time and attendance and sick and vacation time. And this is something that's been pointed out in the, the management letter by the, by the town's accountants as a deficiency. So that's the fourth major deficiency that we see. And then, and then finally, and again, this is something that the people in this room are aware of, there's no budgeting, effective budgeting or forecasting with this software, which results in every town department and the town, every town department, the town itself, using other methods. Most of them using Excel spreadsheets. So what we have is a $100 million enterprise being run by a bunch of, being run on a bunch of different Excel spreadsheets, which we think creates a high risk of error and, and miscommunication. So, so we think that it's time now, because we are now in the second decade of the 21st century, and this software first came into being.